Let's get, let's get this meeting started. So welcome everyone to the Charlton Board of Selectmen Meeting. Today is February 9th, 2020. It is 6:35 PM. And of course, this is going to be, this is a remote meeting and because of that, we're going to be doing all our votes by roll call, as we always do. So the first order of business is to read the agenda items. The first item we have is the consent agenda warrant approval is needed, reading of the agenda, which that's what I'm doing now. We're going to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 26, 2021, followed by community relations announcements and open forum. Then we'll have appointments and resignations, scheduled appointments at 6:45 tonight. We have a poll hearing, Boucher Drive. 6:50, we have a poll hearing AF Putnam Road, 7:00 PM, an interview and potential appointment of police chief. Possible discussion of next steps to fill police department vacancy. Then we will go into the new business, 2021 scholarship questions and award of permit tracking system software contract. Under old business, we will be discussing and voting on the human resources assistant. And that's followed by the Board of Selectment Committee reports. Each individual selectman will be reporting on CM, one will be CMRCP Economic Development Commission, Fire Station Building Committee, LNG Committee, Marijuana Advisory Committee, Sex Offended By Law Committee, Stipend Advisory Committee. Then we will get into Board of Selectment Policy Review. We have a policy to access town council to review and vote on, followed by Board of Selectment Goals and Objectives and Student Select Person Report, that'd be Henry, thank you. And the Town Administrator Report, Other Business Unknown at time of posting. And we will adjourn and we do have an executive session tonight for the folks who need to know. All right, so we'll move back up to the minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from January 26, 2021?
Moved second.
So Bill, thank you. Patsy, thank you. We have motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. David?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Patsy?
Hi.
I vote aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, just a quick point of order. I believe Singer was supposed to keep his beard on through the community announcements. Announcements. Well, I thought it was like, like there would be agenda item three, Selectmen Singer, just going to throw that out there too.
I thought it was, it's okay. It's our, our good cause, right? So community, next up is community.
Well, it's not the hat. Oh, it's all unconnected.
All right. Cause you can announce what you're, why you're doing it now that maybe more people has joined us. But so we're going to go into community relations announcements and open forum. David, before I read the announcements, do you want to just make a quick statement again, why you're doing, why, why, why you look like that?
And that you haven't just lost your mind, whatever.
So yeah, I'm not, I'm not completely crazy. But so for anyone who did just join, was me here before. I am wearing this because I was challenged to wear it to a meeting to raise money for Charlton's Chip In Food Pantry. And if I wore this through announcements, and which I did, but no, Slavon Broaski hadn't say, no open forum announcements, then there's at least a half a dozen people who said they will donate cash to Charlton's Food Pantry, Chip In. And I'm hoping that others will, will help out as well. But we've got at least a half a dozen people who said, wear the beard and we'll give money.
For a good cause. That will, thank you for explaining it, David. Any comments?
Anyone that could keep the announcements going as long as possible. So it's like, it's like a sweat stop would be.
I remind you, this is very hot.
Here we go. I think I added a few, Mr. Broaski. All right. So the first announcement, 2021 dog licenses are now available through the clerk. Check www.toutofcharlton.net for details to pay online, drop payment in Dropbox or mail payment. You can call the town clerk's office for any questions at 508-248-2249. Nomination papers are now available for the May 1st, 2021 town elections. Details and a list of open seats are on the town website, town clerk's page. Please call for questions and process during COVID town hall closure. The town hall will be closed on Monday, February 15th in observation, in observance of President's Day. Anyone else have any other announcements?
Please chip in to chip in.
Just a brief reading. It was the best of times, worst of times.
Really?
The age of wisdom. It was.
We go in there.
Oh, I'm done. Well, well done, Selectmen Singer.
All right. So now we'll open it up if there's someone who's listening and they'd like to, you know, they had something they wanted to say or add, all they need to do is raise their hand virtually, of course. And we'll acknowledge them and just state your name and we'll give you a couple of minutes and that's that. Do we see any, any?
Seeing none at this time.
Okay. We shall move forward then. All right, we are now on appointments and resignation. We don't have anything listed under there, Andrew, right? All right. So move forward over an hour early. What do you think? Let's go to new business. 2021 scholarship questions. We have about five minutes to, to kill, basically.
All right. Each year, the town of Charlton is charged with awarding students the following scholarships. The Nehemiah B. Stone Scholarship, which was given to the town to be used for scholarships for graduating seniors of Shepherd Hill Regional High School and Bay Path Vocational High School, who reside within the boundaries of what was formerly school district number two in the town of Charlton. The Jesse Smith Educational Fund, which was given to the town with the general intent and purpose to assist in providing educational advantages for the children in the districts three and four in Charlton. And the Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund, which was accepted by the town in 1915, with the general intent and purpose to assist in teaching the art of cooking and domestic science. The M. Wayne Colby Scholarship, which is awarded by the family, does not have enough interest earned in it at this time to make an award. In order to qualify for these scholarships, the Board of Selectmen chooses a question in essay form to be completed by students who are interested in applying for one or more of these scholarships. With the assistance and recommendation of the schools, the Board of Selectmen can choose the most qualified recipients. After reviewing past questions, I recommend the board consider the following question for the Nehemiah B. Stone Scholarship and the Jesse Smith Educational Fund. With the coronavirus impacted in-person learning, how do you feel the educational process could be improved while considering the current social distancing guidelines? Please describe your experience with hybrid and/or remote classes and what the challenges have been adapting to these learning models. For the Edwin Phillips Cooking Fund, I recommend using the past question. What role models in your life influence you to continue in the food service industry and where do you see yourself in five years? What's the questions that are chosen by the board? The office will compile the scholarship applications and forward to the schools. The applications are due back at our office by April 1st, 2021 and lay brought to the board for awarding at a future meeting.
Wishes of the board?
Madam Chair, I want to thank you, Andrew. I think especially on the former question. I think that's an excellent and timely approach. Curious to hear what Henry thinks, to be honest with you.
Yeah, definitely. I've applied to a ton of colleges, a ton of scholarships. I've actually never heard that question, Andrew. So I think it's a good one. It requires the students to be analytical. It's not really a recyclable question either. So I think you'll get a lot of good responses. I would just add, make sure you add kind of like a specified word count, just so you have a general guideline, what you're looking for in the S's.
Great advice. Any other comments?
I'm great to me.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the questions as.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Hearing none, Steve?
No, well said.
Aye. That's Patsy.
Aye.
Bill?
Hi.
And David?
Aye.
I vote aye, passes. Thank you very much, Andrew, and thank you for the input, Henry. Much appreciated.
I'm sure you want to town council? That's pretty straightforward, if I can tell.
I don't know. Is it? I'm good with that. Yeah, sure. We'll move down, get a couple of minutes. We'll that is under.
I'm trying to kill three minutes.
I'm just trying to find it. Oh, number, there we are. Thank you. Thank you, Patsy. So number four, Board of Selectment Policy Review, the policy to access town council, Andrew?
Attached is a policy to access town council for the board's consideration. Currently, the board's policy for use of town council states, at the meeting of the Board of Selectmen held on June 8th, 2004, the board voted to limit the town council access to the Board of Selectment Chair and/or Town Administrator. This new policy is to ensure that access to town council is controlled in an, in an order to maintain a record of legal opinions and advice and to ensure that budgetary limitations are maintained. I'd recommend the board approve the policy.
We have a motion?
Can we just have?
Take a motion that we approve the, the new policy that Karen worked religiously on.
Well, with Andrew, but thank you. Is there a second? Then David will open it up for discussion.
I was going to say, I'll second for discussion and then defer to Selectmen Singer.
All right, yep.
If Andrew would please, for everyone watching, if you would tell everyone what the differences, what the actual changes are. And how it will be enacted or affect.
Yeah, the biggest change is basically that, you know, the both board and the both the board and town administrator have the, are the members of the board have the right to access the town council. There is a process by which that, you know, new matters would be brought forward and either approved or at least vetted to see whether or not there's already an opinion that's been generated on that. Generally, it's just that we can keep track of items as they come and try to avoid increased legal costs.
So isn't that sort of what we do already, for the most part, if a member wants to seek counsel, they go through the chair for approval.
So and I will, I will answer that. So David, one of the bigger, well, for us, a major change is if the chair chooses to deny the request, it actually will go before the whole board and it'll be documented and then the board makes the decision.
Okay, so that's a big change.
As it should be.
No, no, that is.
I'm hoping everyone agrees.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
So that's all for us.
I mean, I think that we can generally police ourselves because the reality of, if any one of us wants to get an opinion by town council, I mean, 99.9% of the time, unless it's already been asked, I'm just going to say yes, because again, you know, I know we all joke about it, about 20%. Anyone who wants to talk to town council, go and talk to town council. But I do like the idea, Karen, of getting that form ready because it allows us to track it. It allows us to basically develop a repository to be able to say, no, that's already been asked. Look at, this is what they said already type of thing. So no.
Right.
No, I think it's good.
All right, thanks. Thank you, Andrew. I know you worked hard on that. So anyway, can we vote? Any other discussion?
One more. So, so what is the, what's the, what would be the upside of this?
Everything.
In the past, the, the ability for individuals to go to seek legal counsel has been maybe blocked. And this kind of brings the, the, the ability for that, for kind of transparency. If, if I had an issue and I wanted to go to an attorney, the, the chair could technically say, no, the TA could say no, and now I'm stuck with my legal issue. It just make, it just forces it to kind of, and the form and the process kind of forces it to go to the whole board. So say if something, not that something shady is going to happen, something shady is happening. Pretty much now the whole entire board has to be in on it, right? And that's never going to happen. So it just kind of brings everything. It just, I think it just clarifies the, it forces transparency on the board. Not that we ever need that, but just in case it just a little control to put in place.
Yeah, I think it's a system of checks and balances more than anything.
Exactly.
I, I think I understood that ahead of time. I just wanted to make, again, I don't think the people at home, I don't, I don't, the Q and A that we just, but that's great.
Yeah, again, improves communication, collaboration, transparency. And it keeps everyone on the same page and you might even get a question answered. You didn't even, you know, you, you wanted to know, but hadn't had the opportunity to ask it either. So, all right.
Form is awesome too. It kind of makes you, it forces you to think about if there's other, you know, other ways to get your answer without spending the money on counsel too. So that, I think that, that's huge too. It adds in the money, you know, the, the potential savings.
Yep. All right. So I will take a vote if everyone is all set. All right. So Patsy?
Aye.
Steve?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And Bill?
Hi.
I vote aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. And again, Andrew, thank you so much for your work on it.
Yes, thank you, Andrew and Karen. You guys, this is awesome.
All right, now we can go up to the poll hearing, Andrew. Well, it's just so everyone's, if you're trying to follow along, we're back up on the scheduled appointments and we are going to our 6:45 poll hearing appointment.
Poll hearing for Boucher Drive. Attached will find a request from the Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, requesting permission to install one SO pole on Boucher Drive and install new riser pole for customer, for a new customer service. Also attached is the notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the interim police chief and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns that they received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the public, by reading the notice as sent to the abutters.
And the chairman shall do that. So I'll open it and this is the public hearing notice that was sent to the abutters. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 at 6:45 PM via Zoom webinar. List the link, passcode 061416, phone access 16465588656. To act on a request from Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, requesting permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way, Boucher Drive, National Grid, to install one SO pole on Boucher Drive, beginning at a point approximately 1,250 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Boucher Drive and Old Worcester Road Extension. Install new riser pole for new customer service. They are also making, I'm sorry, they're also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified via Zoom or submit concerns in writing.
Were there any concerns, any, any abutters with problems or issues or?
Not receive anything in writing. I don't know if anybody is on the meeting.
That's what I was going to ask. If anyone's on the meeting that wants to speak, now's the time.
Who the chair, Andrew, were there any concerns? I mean, it's a little bit in my neighborhood, but I'm
I mean.
Way, real butters away, so I don't.
Yeah, I did not receive anything in writing or any phone calls related to any concerns with the.
I kind of know what they're doing. It's, I don't, I don't see it. I, I've kept an eye on that a little bit. I don't see an issue, but, and I haven't heard one.
All right. Bill, I can't hear you. You're muted. Bill's muted.
Sorry, my bad. So unless there are other concerns in the public, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
So we have motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Patsy?
Aye.
David?
Hi.
Chair votes aye officially closed.
I'm sure I'd like to make a motion to approve the request.
The motion, do we have second?
Second.
Patsy, okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Patsy?
Aye.
David?
Hi.
I vote aye, passes as unanimous. All right, thank you. We have another one. Andrew, take it away.
All right. AF Putnam Road. Attached will find a request from National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to install one joint own pole on AF Putnam Road for residential second service to garage. The attached is a notice that was sent to the abutters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the interim police chief and DPW superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to the abutters.
I just want to make sure we, are we early on this?
We are right on.
We're right on. All right. Let's do it. We're going to open it up. I'll read the public hearing notice. The Charlton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 at 6:50 PM via Zoom webinar. The webinar thing follows, passcode 061416, phone access 16465588656. To act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., requesting permission to locate poles, wires, fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. AF Putnam Road, National Grid, to install one JO pole on AF Putnam Road, beginning at point approximately 141.81 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Larned Hill Road. Install P24-50 for residential second service to garage and bring pole distance between P24 and P25 up to National Grid standards. They're also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified via Zoom or submit concerns in writing. Once again, Andrew, do we have any concerns in writing?
It looks like we do have one question from Amanda Pelletier. She also has her hand raised. Asking, after reviewing the diagram provided, it's still unclear where the telephone pole will be. The concern is that the pole will not sit between two driveways.
Do we also have someone here to answer that? I'm assuming.
Yeah, do you have somebody from National Grid?
Right. I would assume they'd be here.
Well, Amanda to talk if she wants to try to, or if she wants to clarify that it's right. Is Amanda?
Amanda, you're very muffled. If that, if you can maybe speak up or yell.
Better now?
Uh. Yes.
Yeah.
So just the concern is after reviewing the diagram that was provided to us, that it's unclear on where the pole is going to be. We don't want it in between our two driveways as well as if there is, if other poles are going to be rearranged on the road. We just don't want our neighbor, you know, to be affected and it being right in front of his house as well.
Excellent. Andrew, it looks like Connor Reynolds from National Grid is on.
Yeah, just trying to get him on here.
We'll get this figured out.
Yeah, I don't see any attendees list. That's why I'm just having trouble getting them.
So Connor, you can probably hear us. The concern from, I'm assuming one of the neighbors is that we want to make sure that that pole is not going to have a negative impact, like you made, it's between the driveways, respect.
Yeah, this, this is our pole. The, we are the one that's getting the pole installed for our barn.
Oh, gotcha. Thanks. Thanks. Yeah, gotcha. So Connor, once we can eventually figure this out, unless you can type it to us to say, no, it's not going to be in the middle of the driveway, then that might help too.
We had talked to, we had talked to the engineer that came to our house and we had talked about a certain location of the pole. I'm just wanting to make sure that it still stands where we had talked about. And it's on the left side. If you're looking at the barn, it's on the left side of the driveway.
So if, I like Bill's suggestion, Connor, if you can type that, since we can't get you on here.
So Amanda comes back and Connor, I'm just going to, I'm the madam chair, it's with you. I'm just going to read what.
Go ahead. Thank you, Bill.
So Amanda, what it says is no other poles will be relocated and the pole will be where it was staked, so as discussed.
Okay.
Amanda, if, cool. As long as you're good with that, Amanda.
Yes. Yep. That's good.
All right.
All right.
Cool. Hey Connor, thanks for responding and thanks for coming.
Anyone else wanting to be heard? No? Andrew? I'm not seeing anyone in the chat either, right?
Gotcha. So Madam Chair, barring anything else, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion?
I can do the motion.
Right. Discussion. Hearing none, Patsy?
Aye.
Steve?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
I vote aye, done. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve based upon the fact that it will appear as state and will not interfere with Ms. Pelletier's driveway.
I second the motion.
All right, motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Bill?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Patsy?
Aye.
Steve?
Hi.
I vote aye, passes as unanimous. All right, great. All right.
I'm just two minutes early.
I think it's good. We can, we can, so now we're back up again on to scheduled appointments, the seven o'clock, the interview and potential appointment of police chief. Andrew?
At the board's January 12th, 2021 meeting, I was asked to notify the police department command staff that the board was seeking applications for anyone interested in applying for the police chief position and that they were due back to me by January 21st, 2021 by 5:00 PM. One application was received from interim police chief Daniel Dow. At your last meeting, we were asked to put to get, put the interview and potential appointment of police chief as well as possible discussion of next steps to fill the police department vacancy, should the board make the appointment. Attached is a list of questions for the candidate. How would the board like to proceed?
Do we have interim, Madam Chair, do we have interim chief Dow out there somewhere?
Yes, we do. So we have a list of questions. How would the board like to proceed? I'm assuming everyone has their questions in front of them.
Yeah, I can go first if you want, Madam Chair. But I'll defer to my colleagues if somebody else wants to go.
You're up, Bill.
Go right ahead.
So thanks for coming in tonight. My question for you is community policing, and I'm using that term a little bit more generically, perhaps community outreach is, is a more appropriate term. It's very important to me and I, I think many in the town. What is your general philosophy and/or strategies and/or tactics that you would implement to make sure that the officers continue to be seen, continue to be known, obviously in our town as friends of the community as opposed to foe?
I'm a fervent believer in community policing. I believe having our offices positively interact with the community only strengthens our relationships with them and pays off many dividends in the end. Big believer in the golden rule, you know, do unto others as you would have them do unto you. So I want our offices treating the citizens as they would treat their own family members and provide the services that they would expect when they show up for work and I, excuse me. It's very important to community policing. Obviously, what's going on today with police reform, all those things will help us if we have a strong relationship with the community. And we enhance our presence and being seen in the schools and interacting with the public in a positive way will only help us in the future.
Next, Chief. We have a request from the audience, if possible. I don't know if you have a camera. If you don't, and you're on your phone, I get it, but wanted to pass that request on.
I have a camera. It's on. I don't know if it's working. We've had some computer issues, but I'm in my office.
Is that your way of asking for more money?
I'll segue to that.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Dan. David, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is more of a behavioral question. So Chief, if you would, a subordinate publicly disagrees with you in front of other officers, a command that's been given. How do you handle that situation?
Well, I would immediately uh speak to that officer or that sergeant, or lieutenant, whoever that happened to be. Um, we're a paramilitary organization, um, people have to follow orders. I, I believe in a vetting process and coming to a, an understanding, but I, I understand that everybody's not gonna agree with me a hundred percent, but at the end of the day, we have a mission to accomplish. And we've gotta have a united front and anything like that is detrimental to the agency when. It's not, people don't have the option of doing what they're told as far as are directed to by the sergeants, they really need to follow through with that. So it's imperative that discipline is adhered to. That I could go through progressive discipline, written warning and, and those types of things if necessary, but obviously, and we can have a difference of opinion and still be friends. It's just that, you know, at the end of the day, we do have a mission and that's the direction we're going in and if you feel that that's not the mission you can support, you know, perhaps it's time to find other agency.
Patsy? Thank you, Dan, and David, Patsy, did you have a question or?
Um, I'll go with the uh, the standard traffic one, so there seems there, over the years, there's been many complaints about traffic and public safety issues. Um, involving speed and accidents. What's your plan to address um the, these issues and? What ideas do you have to mitigate some of the, some of our speeding and traffic issues that concern our town?
You wouldn't believe the amount of complaints from all of the town, now we're forty square miles, so it's very difficult to always have an officer where they need it. We try to look at data, we try to look at accident reports and where accidents occurring. We hired a traffic officer who we tried to basically. Supplant him where in times of need and traffic issues are appearing, we can have, you know, an enforcement take place and at least the, the, the visibly there that would defer, that, excuse me, to deter traffic. Issues and speeds. Uh, it's a logistical nightmare because normally I have two or three people on and trying to put them all over town. Is, is difficult because I have limited resources. I'm not gonna surprise you by telling you down the road, I'd like to get a second traffic officer, that's something I'm gonna be asking for. I, I stress to my offices all the time that that's one of our biggest complaints, now that being said. As bad of a complaint as speeding, somebody could seriously get hurt from an accident, it's not the worst problem to have, we're not talking about gang violence and shootings and things like that that have, you know, plagued other communities and. So we're fortunate that we have a low crime rate, but speeding and traffic are issues we have. One of the biggest, biggest things we could do is work better within uh mask DOT and uh Charlton Highway, just to identify roads that have problems and make, you know, lobby for road improvements. More speed signs, more enforcement directives in the areas that again warranted. And um, obviously, we, I, I forward complaints with a citizen contacts me and says, hey, I've got a problem over here, my name. I do my best to get somebody over there, pass it on to that shift, pass it on to the traffic officers, so it's not like we're not out trying, it's just, there's a lot of people calling for competing resources. Um, somebody's calling, not so much during COVID, but um, pre-COVID, you know, the kids going to Shepherd Hill, sorry, Henry, the kids going to Shepherd Hill are speeding on Partridge Hill Road, so I got a complaint down there. I've got a complaint up off, off by Stafford Street, the cars have gone too fast, so when I start dispersing offices, it's hard to get to the five or six complaints that are throughout town when I only have two or three people to, to send. So that's the problem I have as far as the logistics, but it's certainly something that all the sergeants are aware of, all the patrolmen are aware of, and it's something we try to address.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, Steve?
Yeah, Dan, and, and I'll, I'll give you um a couple of minutes to, to gather this thought if you need it. It's a little off the um. Off, off the uh, the regiment for a police officer, but, or, or potentially a chief. But if, as, as a lot of the board, we all, we, a lot of us understand your background, your, your dedication to police service, what you've gone through. As far as academically and, and testing and all that things and, and, but. But, and this is a, a little bit of a HR question maybe, but how would your, and, and I also know that. Some of, some of your best friends might be fellow officers, but if, if you had a best friend. If you ask the best friend to explain, to, to explain, to define you to us, what would they say?
I, I would a best friend describe me that's on the police department?
Oh, not, not necessarily, it could be a best friend that's not on the police department, but I'm, but I also know you guys all, some of you guys do stick in the same group.
Uh, I think almost all my friends would say, despite my fact that I bust chops a lot, that I'm, I'm very loyal and uh they depend on me, they know I'll show up. And um. Try to live my life that way.
Good answer, that, that's a good answer to a tough question, I know.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, David?
My first question was a, a harder one, a little curveball, this is a little easier. But you've been with Charlton PD for a while, if you look back at your career. What, in your opinion, would be your? Your top two, or, or your, in your mind, your, your top highlight of your career of your, as far as your accomplishments as a police officer in the town of Charlton?
Well, I, I think just getting hired, uh, Mr. Singh was obviously, you know, I was ecstatic, I was working for the sheriff's department, I was um looking for a change. This opportunity presented itself, um, a, a resident from town had suggested that I apply here and uh no regrets. You know, obviously, I, if I was to say achievements, I, I mean. I'm happy really with all the friends in town I've made, I didn't grow up in Charlton, but it seems like uh in the last twenty-three plus years, I, I know so many people from town and have so many uh, you know, friendships and acquaintances with people. So I, I honestly would say that uh the people I've met over the career has probably been the most rewarding. I can't think of a thing that particularly made my day as far as a, a, an act that I did while performing as a police officer, I could say, jeez, that was my crowning moment, but uh, I think overall, it's just the friendships and the, the people that you meet.
Well, that fits well with the community policing.
Anything else, any other questions? I, I, I'd just like to give Dan an opportunity first, thank you for, for seeking this position.
I think Henry had a question, so I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm sorry, thank you, Patsy, because Henry, I didn't, I didn't see you, go ahead, Henry.
Thank you, I just wanted to first say thank you, Mr. Dowd, for taking the time to interview with us. And uh, building off of Mr. Browski's question, uh, I believe you answered something about the schools. So I just wanted to ask, uh, how do you plan on to continue building a relationship with the school community in Charlton?
So Henry, having a regional school system, Dudley currently provides the school resource officer for Shepherd Hill. We provide an officer at Bay Path, we've got a pretty good uh relationship with Bay Path, I actually went to high school with the superintendent, so I've known him for years. Um, I know a lot of the faculty up there, um, I'm, I want our officer building relationships up there that hopefully are long-term and that. The students understand maybe a police officer's perspective and still think that they could go and talk to that officer without being uh minimized or ridiculed, so. I, it's, it's, it's important from a police chief's perspective to put the right officer up at the school, because more harm than good doesn't do us any good, so. As far as the young, the younger kids in the, the elementary school and stuff, I mean, we're very fortunate, they actually like us, we don't have to do much to win them over. Um, so we, we do, we do that, so we rock with the uh. The elementary schools and occasionally the middle school, we've got a great relationship with Dean Packett, the middle school. Um, we're, we're not heavy-handed trying to, you know, ruin every child's life, so we understand their kids, so I think that's a philosophy that the whole department has accepted that, you know, we're, we're in there, we're rooting for the kids.
Thank you, sir, and uh, one last question, kind of a hypothetical question. Uh, how would you handle peaceful protest in the center of town? We've seen what happened in Webster uh this past summer, so what would uh be your reaction? What would you tell your officers if a similar situation happened in Charlton?
Yeah, um, several of us went over to Webster, uh, several of us went over to Southbridge, Sherbridge, uh, most of the peace, uh protests around here were peaceful, so obviously, I don't think there's really. Much need for law enforcement to get involved, other than just make sure uh, you know, vehicles can travel and stuff such while the protest is going on. We've been very fortunate in this part of the country, now that's not necessarily other parts of the country, or if you're asking if things get out of control and rioting, you know, obviously, those. Type of events trigger a different type of reaction, but um, you know, most police officers know that people have rights. And that they certainly have a right to protest peacefully and uh, hey, a lot of times positive change comes from those type of protests.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? I, I'll use the opportunity just once again to say thank you, Dan, for, for applying for this position. Um, and just give you a moment to offer, you know, to, to say what you'd like, you know, maybe, you know, why'd you get into this field in the first place? Um, if you want to share what your thoughts or your objectives are over the first, you know, a few months, um, your long range object, long range objectives, objection, objectives, let us know, whatever you want, yeah, the floor is yours.
Um, so basically, my, my, my dad was a, he's now deceased, but my dad was a Worcester police officer, so it was something as a child I always saw that he got a lot of job satisfaction from. So obviously, I went to college far, got my shot at the jail, worked there for several years and, and then came here and, you know, been happy ever since. As far as, you know, long-term goals and stuff, I think it's very important that we recruit. Retain and promote quality people. You know, that's, I'm, I'm very concerned about, a lot of the command staff is aging out, not that that's a bad thing, but they're probably looking forward to retirement sooner than later. So I'd like to um have them shift more towards mentoring and coaching, uh, a philosophy just to get uh some of the offices up there, because these offices, they're very qualified, but they could use some experience with. Some of the things they haven't been exposed to, and I think we can leave, keep this place being a um. A proactive and community-oriented police department. So those are my goals, uh, hopefully leave the place a little better than I found it. Um, I have an open door policy with everybody, that all the offices and the dispatches and can come in and see me. Obviously, there's times for a chain of command and things like that, there are minor things, but um, I, I work with. Great people, so that makes my life a lot easier, um, nothing but the most admiration for um. My command staff, I, I'm fortunate to have them, I have a lot of coworkers that I, I rely on and um. I, I, I have everybody rolling in the right direction, so um, I'm blessed right now. That'll probably change in two weeks, but right now. Things are looking good, so.
Thank you, uh, Andrew, did you have any questions?
No, I'll defer to the board.
Okay.
Karen? Yeah, Karen, sorry, one more thing, so Dan, when you look back someday, when you finally decide to retire and just hopefully go fishing and relax. What would you like to be able to look back on and say that, you know, what you learned from your predecessors, for good or bad, without naming names? That you're gonna put the Dan Dow, the, the, the chief Dow print or stamp on your tenure? What would you like that for people to remember you for? Again, we're talking perfect world here, someday you retire, people look back and go, oh yeah, Chief Dow did that and that made a difference.
I'd like to give, and I, I, I was frustrated myself, uh, Mr. Browski, when I was a patrolman, that sometimes there wasn't a flow and you had ideas as a patrolman and, and sometimes they weren't. No matter who was chief, they just, I, I, I wanna try to avoid that, I'd like to have communication uh flowing to the sergeants and to me and lieutenant. Uh, so that basically we, we're exposed to the idea, some of the, some of the best ideas come from the people with the least time on the job. It's just, you have to stay, you know, you have to stay open-minded. I, I'd like people to say that, hey, you know, he provided us with training, he, he, he inspired us to wanna go out there, do a good job. So I hope that's what the officers leave with, as far as, I, I never think that I um work for somebody bad. I always think that maybe they should have done things different, or maybe you learn from those mistakes, but I, I've never really had a bad boss. I mean, I've had bosses that I've certainly disagreed with and stuff, but as long as their intent was good, I kind of felt that. I, I didn't agree with the, the directions they went to get to the endpoint, but we were in agreement on the endpoint, so um, you know, that, that always happens.
I think that was directed at Selectman Browski.
I was gonna say, uh, if you get hired and voted to us, yeah, you may have a very different field, don't worry about that.
If I, Karen, one last question, if I can.
Yep, sure.
So Chief, looking at the department uh that you're asking to take over permanently, what do you see as the department's current most critical need? And how do you think we should address that?
Um, well, I'd say, if you ask me though, it needs to be done almost immediately, I'd say, and it's more for officer's safety than anything, we really need another patrolman hired, which is, we're gonna be shot, we are shot when, as soon as somebody gets promoted here. Um, hopefully me tonight, uh, we'll be down a patrolman, we really need to get moving on that. Because, you know, it's just when officers respond to calls, it's obviously a lot easier uh when they have, you know, when I can send two to a call, when, when something goes south and now there's a problem, it's nice to have another set of hands and another set of eyes there. Um, so obviously, hiring another officer, I think, is, is critical. The other problem we're having is communications, and I, I gotta thank Andrew and uh Chief Knopf, because they've really picked up the ball on this radio project. Um, so I, I know this bid's going out for improving some communication issues, so I, I can't have my offices not being able to communicate with one another and to the base of the dispatch center. Or without um, you know, compromising their safety, so for those two reasons, I would say officer's safety being another officer and an improvement in the fix that we're working on for radios.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other discussion or questions? How about a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Singer?
I would motion that we offer acting chief, interim chief, whatever the title is, Dowd. Uh, the permanent position of chief of police for the town of Charlton.
I would second, yeah, I would second that.
We have a motion and we, we have a second, do we have any other discussion?
Just that if this passes, obviously, we would need to enter into a negotiation. With the chief.
Okay, any other discussion?
And Chair, just, I mean, very quickly, I just want to say between, you know, interim chief or acting chief Dowd's experience, you know, coming up through the ranks and. My thinking has evolved over the years when it comes to um internal promotions versus opening it up, and I gotta tell you, someone like. Again, acting chief Dowd is, is one of the reasons why I've changed my mind, because when you have someone who's talented, you want to cultivate that talent and make sure that he or she. Works up through the ranks because they know often what the problems are that need to be fixed, and they also have great ideas because they've been around a while, so. You know, again, it's pretty obvious which way I'm gonna vote based upon that, but uh, you know, I, I think that acting chief Dowd will make an excellent and a long line of succession of, of chiefs.
Thank you, Bill, any other comments? Alright, hearing none, we'll start the vote, David?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Patsy?
Aye.
And I vote aye, it's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't get greedy on the comments, right?
Congratulations, we can't do a group picture with you now. But, but uh, Chief Dowd, I, I'll echo, you know, what Selectman Browski said about internal movement. I, I think our department has the best, top to bottom, and I'm very proud that you're our, our new chief.
Thank you, absolutely.
Alright.
That said, Madam Chair, we do need to look into filling uh former Lieutenant Dowd's position. My request and motion then would be that we contract with the same assessment center we used in the past. To conduct an assessment center for the lieutenant's position and also notify patrolmen and limit it to the command staff, so sergeants. Could uh apply to, to fill the lieutenant position and notify the patrolmen, obviously, that then, there would then be an opening for a sergeant, and I'm not sure. If we have a test, if they have to test, what, I don't know the steps for sergeant, um, but we need to look into filling the lieutenant and sergeant role, and my recommendation in motion is assessment center for lieutenant.
I'll, I'll second for discussion and.
I would like, Andrew, just to chime in, um, if you wanted to add any comments about. All right, I, I would like Andrew just to chime in, um, if you wanted to add any comments about what needs to happen moving forward.
That'd be the appropriate um, course of action, I think we just have to look at what our pre, prior contract was with the assessment center to ensure that we don't have to go back out for an RFP.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, through the chair.
Yeah, Dan.
Just for clarification, and I, I've contacted civil service. And I'm just waiting for a response from them, I have spoken to the woman that handles this area. So what, what has happened in the past is people that have taken a promotional assessment or written exam and passed. So for instance, we had a sergeant's promotional assessment. And five people passed that. After a year and time, they may be el, those people along with the command staff may be eligible to take. The lieutenant's assessment, so that's a question I don't, I've asked. But I don't have a definitive answer, so they were reaching out to Lynn because there's some type of formula. A, a year means something as far as the, how long they've been sitting on the exam, so I don't want to tell you folks. One thing or other, if you decide to go with a written exam. There's a, there's pros and cons to written exam, it's, 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 the material's already laid out, they know what they have to study for, but it's very difficult. Um, a lot of people, six months to a year, that is normally held in September, if that's the way you're gonna go. You're gonna need to tell them sooner than later, an assessment, you can do whatever you want, but there's a cost to that, and you, obviously Andrew will, could better prep you on that. And then, it may be open to, it may be open to nine people, not four.
You know, thank, so thank you, chief, yeah, what we found with the assessment center and what made us go that route last time. Was pretty much unanimous from those who went through it, it was exhausting, and it was far more difficult than the test. So I think it benefited the town. Um, other select, I've spoken to from other communities felt the same regarding assessment centers, officials from Boston, so. I would ask, based upon that motion, if it, if it passes, we haven't voted yet. Um, that Chief Dowd, if you would, then work with Chairman Spewack and uh, Mr. Golis. To ensure we have the right group, whether it is to your point, just. Uh, command staff, or whether the others who tested should be included, I, I trust you'll work with, with Karen and Andrew to get that set correctly.
Yes, sir.
So Chair, so Chairman Preston Spewack, so second singer, just to, ju- just for my own benefit of the second, so. It sounds like you're modifying it a bit to say that you're, that you're okay to open it up if it's, if, if it's allowable to the folks who passed it as well.
Right, basically, if, if the rule would have been that these who had prior, uh, previously tested should be included, then I think we have to include them. Out of fairness.
I'm fine with that, no matter what, so yeah, 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 that's good, so, so Chairman Spewack, however you want to handle that motion, I'm fine seconding it, if it makes sense.
I'm fine if you, so long as the person who made the motion and the person who said, that would be you, Bill, you know, good with it, we, I think we're good to go. Everyone's, and everyone's clear in what we're voting on, Andrew, did you have something to say, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for, for clarification.
Oh, that was, sorry, yeah.
So if, if we, a- at what point do we? Wi- without having negotiations with our new police chief, how far down this road do we go? And how long, what's the timeframe? Can we set a timeframe to negotiate with Dan Dowd and Chief Dowd and make sure that we have all those ducks in a row before we go down this other avenue, or is it?
So, Adam Chair, if I may, to Slip and Cronus's question, I think um, we need to execute both tonight, we can certainly, to his point. Work on the negotiations with the chief before taking the actual action on lieutenant. Um, but we still have to have the vote, or we can't proceed with that. But we can say, you know, we will work, or we would ask, you know, Chairman Spewack and uh, Mr. Golis. To work with the, the chief upon successfully concluding negotiations to then move forward with contracting the assessment center.
Now, Steve, you're right though, because we don't want to have someone take the LT's exam if, if we can't reach an agreement with Dan.
That's it, and, and, and yeah, and I think I understood the answer, but just there's a lot of, there's a lot of people.
Yeah, so upon successful completion of negotiations, we would then execute the uh, assessment center research or contract.
Patsy, did you have a question or anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Any further discussion? Right, so hearing none, we'll vote on the motion on the floor, David.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Patsy. Hi. I vote I, it's unanimous, thank you.
Madam Chair.
David.
Since that was regarding lieutenant, I'd like to make a motion. Um, that based upon the successful conclusion of negotiations with our chief, our new chief. And successfully promoting and hiring a new lieutenant. That we ask Chairman Spewack to again work with uh, Town Minister Andrew Golis and the chief. To set up whatever and begin whatever steps are necessary for patrolmen to uh, seek to advance to sergeant.
The only thing, Karen, through you. The only thing is hypothetically, if one of the folks who took the test who weren't a sergeant. Who was defrogged into the lieutenant's role, then it wouldn't be an open sergeant spot.
Right, then we just wouldn't have to act on it, but at least we have.
Yeah, 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 I'll second that, that's, yeah, that's no issue.
Through the chair.
Yep, Chief Dowd.
Uh, just so the selectmen aware though, there is a current. Assessment center that was performed for the sergeants, and that has a life, a shelf life. So we have to notify uh, civil service and see what that shelf life is, because they're, they're normally good for more than a year. Okay. Now, if you, you may not have a cost, you may have five people to choose from that are on that list, or. If that list is expired by the time you do the next promotion, then you'd have to potentially hold another assessment. But it may not be a cost if you're, or if you wanted to open up to more people, those would be options I guess you would have.
No, we appreciate that, I think the vote authorizes uh, Karen and Andrew and you. Uh, to work together depending, uh, whatever, on whatever's needed based upon the outcome.
And I think we just want to get you back up fully staffed as soon as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. No, no doubt about that.
Come back and wait two weeks for another meeting to have the board vote to approve a test or assessment center if necessary. So this is all if necessary.
So Dan, Dan, go work with Lynn, figure out what, what needs to get done, and then just let Karen and Andrew know.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so I seconded David's thing, if that helps.
All right, yeah, any further discussion?
So the, just so that, and again, I, I, just so the people, the participants understand at home that. The lieutenant's position was not taken out of civil service. So that's why we're going through the assessment process.
So you, so the fact that it's civil service, you could do assessment center, or you can test, either or. When you go with assessment center, because it's civil service, we're still required to take the top score, the difference. Between civil service and non-civil services are, as far as assessment center, which is why I want it removed. Is because the town pays a lot of money for these assessment centers, and the assessment center creates reports. Complete write-ups and evaluations of every candidate, but as long as it's civil service, we can't read what they write. So I still think the assessment center and most I've spoken to agree is the right way to go, because it's a more difficult process. It's more tiring, mentally exhausting, and they gotta be on their game, and you get the best. Um, you can't just be, I'm good at testing and get through it. Um, but the nice thing about it, if it was not civil service, is we could read the full assessments, but we are still required to take. Because it's civil service, the top scorer.
Thanks for that explanation, Mr. Singer.
Thank, yeah, thank you, David.
All right, any further discussion? Our hearing none, we'll take a vote, Patsy, you're muted.
Sorry, very loud children, I.
David.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
I vote I, it's unanimous, thanks, everyone.
Hey, Karen, Karen, one quick last thing, uh, yeah, to Steve's point, uh. I, I, we can talk about it exactly, we'd have to post a new one, or it depends how, what we're talking here. We should identify someone to, to enter into, to go, uh, into contract negotiations with uh, acting. Or soon, hopefully soon to be chief Dowd.
Okay, agreed.
Any volunteers, anybody?
I will, if nobody else will.
I, I can help, and I'd help too, I mean, so. David, pick your partner.
I can step out of it. Either way, everyone here is qualified to do it, if, I'm happy to help, but I can only do it honestly, like nights after work, my days are full.
I was gonna say, either David, David, Karen and Andrew, or David, Patsy and Andrew, doesn't, doesn't matter to me, Karen and Patsy, it depends upon. Who, who was more strongly.
Well, you left me out of that whole.
Bill didn't throw his name in there.
Yeah, I got my mouth shut.
You know, I, I will say, Karen, since, you know.
Yes, yes.
It'd be nice to work with her again before she goes.
Patsy, is that cool?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, 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 I'm motion to appoint David and Karen to work with Andrew to hopefully negotiate a successful contract with him.
I would second.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Patsy.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
I vote I, passes. Back down, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Anything further on this before we move on? So next on the agenda will be, have you even lost my place here, where are we? Award of, I think we're on to new business number two, is that correct, everyone? Award of permit tracking system software contract? All right, Andrew.
All right, so the town solicited a request for proposals to upgrade, migrate and expand the capabilities of the town's current private tracking system. The town received eleven responses to the bid. After review of the non-price technical proposals and price proposals, I recommend that the contract be awarded to full circle technologies. Who provide the most advantageous overall proposal for the town.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, here, hearing none, David. David.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Patsy.
Hi.
I vote I, it passes, it's unanimous, thank you. All right, next item, old business, human resources assistant, Andrew.
This request that attaches a comparative HR staffing data compares, uh, compared to other comparable communities. The difficulty with developing a true apples-to-apples comparison is that every town has different processes for handling payroll benefits and workers' compensation claims. Prior to the passage of the HR director bylaw, the positions of treasurer and collector were split. The treasurer at that time assumed many of the responsibilities of benefit and payroll coordination. While workers' compensation issues were handled through the town administrator's office. The intent of the bylaw was to centralize these functions to one overseeing authority and to approve overall. Per, the approved process oversight. My recommendation to provide assistance to that office in order to support its operations still stands. And as it was mentioned during the last uh, meeting, there are two administrative assistants that currently work in the town administrator board of selectmen's office. One being an assistant to the town administrator and an assistant to the board of selectmen. Both individuals have separate but very critical job duties. The assistant for the board, for the board's duties include performing key administrative tasks regarding appointments, licenses, town reports, scholarships. Research on matters coming before the board and much more. The assistant to the town ministry handles bill processing, property insurance issues as well as contract and procurement administration. Along with many other administrative related tasks that are critical to this office. The roles of both employees are valuable to the administration of town services, and I would recommend abandoning their job duties at this time.
Thank you, Andrew, all right, I will open this up to our board. Any comments, motions?
So, I'm looking at the data, it does seem like we don't need more than one staff. Um, I was gonna throw together all these flow charts, um, but I get, definitely get accused of micromanaging here, so I. Took a step back, but overall, if you look at the data and the, and, and if. I don't believe we are, we, we need somebody else, and if we do need somebody else looking at this data, then perhaps we have an inefficient process. We're doing something that the other towns are doing better than us. So, um, again, that's my two cents on it, and I'm twenty percent of the vote, but that's, looking at the data, that's my opinion.
Madam Chair, just, sorry, Patsy, are you good? I, I don't want to cut you off.
Yeah.
Just, just a heads up, I'm not sure if you're interested in taking residents' questions, comments, but uh, Dave Smolsky, uh, wanted to say something on this one.
After the, um, after all the board members have a chance to talk, David, thank you, Bill, for bringing that to my attention.
And I, I'll say it once, I'm not gonna berate the point. I, I looked at the, the data provided by Andrew, I also went to town hall, I spoke to some employees. And I go back to what I said originally. I'm not going to micromanage department heads that we hire to do these jobs, the reason we hired them is because we trust them to make these decisions. If something comes out down the road, we decide that a decision made by department head was bad. Then it's up to us to take it up with the department head themselves regarding their decision-making and take action regarding the department head. But I'm going to move forward, for now anyway, having had these conversations and trust. My town administrator, my water sewer soup, my highway, my police and fire chiefs. Who are there full-time doing these jobs to tell me, who is not there full-time doing these jobs, what they need and what the difficulties and challenges are. So I support Andrew's request.
Bill.
Sorry, Steve, do you want to go next, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I, I can, um, yeah, I, I think. This isn't, this isn't a new position, this is backfilling an existing position that's already in the budget. And I, I think, well, I think the board was very prudent from August until now. To hold off until we saw what would, what was happening with COVID and all that, and, and, and we were, we were able to move some, some personnel around a little bit. I think it's, we're at the time where it comes time to fill that, to backfill that position.
I've, I've also talked to a few other people. Uh, and David, just to David's point, we hear our department heads, we hear, I, I, even on FinCom, I hear the. Police chief talking about it, the whole bit, my question, though, and this is. Are we at a point when we, when we, now that we're going out to hire somebody and posting a position. Are we at the point where we want to start thinking about posting a position that is saying, saying in fact that. This may end up being a five-day-per-week job?
Well, that, the board hasn't voted to do this yet, so.
Well, well, no, well, but, but if you, but if, but if you start posting, no, we haven't voted, and I'm not saying we will, but, but if, but if you have an age, in my thought on this. If you have an HR department with two people, maybe it could one, go in on Friday mornings to help out. At, at town employees, that, 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 that may be their only morning to get there, or. I, I mean, it, maybe, maybe this question is more for Andrew, Andrew, right now, when we post this, do we say this is a, a four-day-per-week position, or?
We would, we would put it out as the number of hours per week, um, and leave within the management rights to determine how those hours are. Are spread out.
Okay.
And to follow up on Steve's question, somewhat entered to you, can you remind the folks at home how many hours a week we're talking about here?
Um, I believe it's budgeted currently for eighteen hours.
For this, everyone knows this, yeah, I'm sorry, Steve, go. So for the folks at home, this is, to select and cross's point, this is a backfill position, eighteen hours uh, per week. And Karen, the only thing I'll say, because I have to tread lightly, is that for as much as we all want to tell everyone in town what goes on. There's a lot that goes on that we can't just, that we just can't talk about, it's just a simple statement of fact. Uh, any type of HR personnel issue, we really can't talk about it. Uh, except to say that there are a lot of HR. I'm using the umbrella term issue here, but the HR department has done a lot of work, more than I had initially anticipated. When I first joined the board a couple of years back. I'll say if this were a net new position, I, it sounds a little hypocritical, I might be a little more critical of it. But knowing what Lynn has been taking on, knowing what we are informed of and a lot of other stuff, as well as with Andrew's proposal to. Basically shift resourcing a bit to help out of, other staff departments, I'm actually okay with this one for now.
All right, any other comments, David? All right, so I, I'll just add my, my two cents, Patsy first, I don't. All right, so I'll just add my, my two cents, Patsy first, I don't, I don't think you're micromanaging. I think you're trying to be fiscally responsible and I do, I, I get that. In this particular case, I, I have to say it because of what Andrew has said over and over again and, and because we are backfilling it, I, I am going to support it. I would suggest, well, let's vote on this and then I'll make a comment because I don't want to get off, off base here, but, um, I guess I'll call for a vote unless there's other, any other comments.
Yeah, again, Madam Chair, I'll use you, I'll defer to your prerogative, but as a reminder about, I believe.
About Dave, yeah, so yes, of course, I'm not going to say someone cannot, you know, chime in, but I will ask you, you know, to be very brief, like thirty seconds and just again state your name and the, any, the question you have, Dave.
Yeah, sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I, I would just like to speak up in support of Mr. Gollis when it comes to filling the HR assistant position. Um, I've been following the topic over the past couple of months and my interest is really because I've been in human resources for about twenty-five years. And something that Mr. Singer said during the last BOs meeting, it really struck a chord with me. It was along the lines of Andrew basically being the town CEO. So if Andrew is the equivalent of the town CEO, I'm sure he's in tune to what the department head's needs are. And you guys have already mentioned it multiple times, this is not a newly created position, it's not incremental headcount, it's something that's been in the budget and I, I just, thinking about my experience, if unfortunately something unexpected happened and a department of one person wasn't able to fulfill those responsibilities, how would that be handled? Would Andrew have to moonlight and do two HR jobs plus a TA job? It just seems like a liability. That's really all I wanted to say, it's just in support of filling the position that's already been budgeted. So thank you for letting me speak up tonight.
Yeah, and thank you for your comments and for keeping it brief.
Sure.
Bill, did you have something else?
No, I was just saying thanks to Dave, I mean, you know, at least to move it along, Madam Chair, what I do is make a motion to approve the request for the part-time position. And we can discuss and figure out what.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, David? Bill?
Hi.
Patsy?
No.
Steve?
Hi.
Right, and the chair votes side, so it's quarter one, but thank you, it was really good conversation and I think we're all coming at it trying to do the right thing, that's for sure, it's always good to have a good spirited debate every now and then, right?
Thank you, girl.
Any other comments? What, so one, one thing I did want to mention after the vote, which is now, of course, is, and I know I won't be around after May, but I've said it before, post-COVID, you know, after you get through this, or we get through the pandemic, I think it would do the town well to do what other communities have done or with, in the past for other reasons, but a retrospective, it's called, and that's really to go back and reevaluate, you know, how, you know, look at people who are working remotely, who can still maybe do something like that. The positions in general, you know, looking at the physical office space, things like that. And, and again, I know other communities have done it and it's just, just food for thought. Because we're finding out, obviously, that in this particular case, sometimes people can work from home and that saves some money and I'm not suggesting everyone that that happens for everyone all the time, but always good to take a look back, back after we get through things to see what worked, what didn't work, what we have learned and how best we can move forward that works for everyone, so that's just my two cents.
Aaron, I think it's a great idea, look at the commercial real estate market, a lot of companies learned from the pandemic and they're not going to go back to their offices. So many have said, you're not coming back, stay home.
Yeah, they've saved a ton of money because of, well, for lots of reasons, right, but, uh, okay, that's it. Next, we're still moving right along, where are we? All right, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're down to Board of Selectment Committee reports, right, everyone? We've been bouncing all over.
Yep.
All right, and this, we should breeze right through. So once again, I've, I've asked that we keep this on here so we can at least give everyone an idea of what we're doing, that the committees, where they are, even if it's just, if you know when the next meeting's going to be and it's, you know, a visual for all of us to say, oh, yeah, I should look into that, or, you know, have comments on it, so the very, the very first one is CMR PC and that's Patsy and Bill.
Yeah, Patsy, I haven't seen any like updates already.
Nothing, nothing that I've seen new.
Okay, and they have, they, they still have the quarterly, I don't know, again, I was on it the last, last year or whatever, and I don't know if they're still doing that, I'm assuming that's via Zoom too, but I don't know.
Yeah, the next, the next one they have, I'll make sure that I attend, but I don't have, I don't have an invitation on my calendar yet, so.
And I do, and Andrew, just correct me if I'm wrong, because I didn't know this when I first joined and was on that committee. I guess that the town somehow benefits by having us participate. Yes, don't we earn points or something that we can get put toward?
We get, yeah.
Writing or?
District local technical assistance credit, so if a project comes up that we might need some technical assistance with, it gives us credit toward number of hours that they can put toward it.
Okay, thank you, because I think that's good for everyone to know.
Andrew, if you see the invitation coming, can you make sure you send it to me? I don't know if I have, if they're sending it, when I, when I, when I tried to sign up for one of their things, and for the MMA one, the, the, for the selectnet, the mass municipal, I think they have the wrong email address on file for me.
I will, I'll try to figure out where that's at.
Doesn't make sense I'm getting my invitations for those.
And I'm assuming we did switch over, I know when, when we wrote to have new people put in, we have to, I had to fill out a form when I did it, so they had all that information, I'm assuming that, that took place, because otherwise you won't be seeing much of anything.
Yeah, I'll have to scroll through, I get a lot of emails from CMR PC now, I'll just
Okay.
Generated one, so I have to kind of pick through, try to find where the last one was.
Yep.
I think, I think Mary helped us out because she yelled at me because I'm an idiot because I gave the wrong email address, so I'm pretty sure that.
Okay, thanks, Bill. All right, moving on, the Economic Development Commission, Steve?
Yeah, we're, um, we, we have, well, as of the last report, last selectmen's meeting, we had our first meeting and I think we're, we're having another one later this month, I'm not quite sure the date, I don't know if it's been picked yet, maybe Andrew's selected that. We're, we're, we're a little bit beyond organizing and now we're just trying to fill different positions and go forward. But, but it's exciting stuff, there's some grant issues going on back and forth where we may be able to to tap into some grant money that we've learned about this week and so.
Andrew, did you want to add anything regarding that?
I was, I was just looking to see if I had on my calendar, but I have to look back at my meeting notes.
And just as a reminder to the, to the, to the public that, of course, all these meetings and the Zoom links are on the town website on the calendar, so. The next is Fire Station Building Committee, there's nothing new to report, the next meeting is Thursday. Andrew, unless you know something that I do not, that you want to mention, again, you can feel free to chime in.
No, they have, no meetings between the last meeting and this one, so nothing to report.
And next would be the LNG Committee, Patsy, anything you can say about that?
We have an executive session tonight to discuss it. Since it's all kind of tied up with the lawyers right now, we'll listen tonight and then be able to discuss with the public, there's nothing additional since the last time we had this update.
All right, and the number five Marijuana Advisory Committee, Patsy and Steve? Then you still haven't met yet, right, or you, I don't make it sound like you didn't meet, but there wasn't a meeting since last, last time. Couple of weeks ago. Let's put it this way, any scheduled meetings?
Is there a scheduled meeting right now? I don't see it on my calendar either. I'm usually good about that stuff.
If there's any new business to act on, so.
So that's, okay.
What is, do we have, is there actually in, when the formation of the committee, was there any particular, particular schedule that we're supposed to have?
I, I remember, Andrew, I remember reading something and, because you just quoted from it, that if there's business that needs to, you know, it's kind of, you meet if you need to, but I thought there were, I thought there was other criteria about that.
I know that in our hosts, you know, the, all of our, you know, all of the people in, any businesses would have, have to attend those, but meeting when we need to is, is fine, if there's no changes, then there's probably not, not a reason to meet, but I, I just want to make sure that we, there isn't any when we, when the, during the formation that we actually, you know, kind of had, you know, particular timelines or whatever. You don't have to enter that now, just want to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to doing, be doing.
I watch Philbrook is the chair of that committee, so I'll, I know he's out for this week, so I'll follow up with him on next week.
Thank you, and the Sex Offended By Law Committee, Mr. Singer?
So right now, the goal is to still have that on a town meeting this year.
Excellent. And number seven, Stipend Advisory Committee, Bill?
Yeah, we had a great kickoff a couple of weeks ago, we actually have another meeting scheduled for Thursday. There's general discussion, basically, for all intents and purposes of a few years back, and David, you might, you might be the only one that was around at the time. Stipends for most elected officials were cut with the thought that they would be brought back. There's a general direction that we should at least have that discussion to say, you know, would that attract more candidates? Is it, you know, how do we achieve parity amongst boards who are meeting most, most like, et, et, et cetera? So my assumption is we're going to have a proposal for the Board of Selectmen to consider putting into the budget along with FinCom. And if that goes in, then town meeting will obviously be, have the final say.
Hey, Bill, is, I, did you guys look at what other local towns are doing also?
Uh, we, we started to with Andrew, just to kind of basically say, look, are we completely out of whack, are we at least in the ballpark? I think one of the general concerns is, you know, for example, it doesn't, you know, basically, for like planning, like I'm kind of making something up right now, Patsy, but you know, why does the planning board earn X as a stipend versus the Board of Health Y or Board of Assessors Z, when you, they all kind of meet the same? So we're trying to figure out like, all right, how much is a reasonable number to try to attract and retain qualified candidates without breaking the bank? So basically reward people for the time, for all intents and purposes, you, you know, like we do a part-time job. So is it, how do we help people for, 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 for doing that? So my short answer, yes, longer answer, there's lots of different variables that, that, that we're looking at as well.
Right, no one's, I mean, obviously, none of us are doing it for the money, because the amount of time that's actually spent versus what we, we could collect hands and probably be, be, you know, have the same, but it is nice to feel, you know, it's nice to kind of feel appreciated, especially the, when you look at what some, what some of the other boards are making, I absolutely agree, so thank you, Bill, for doing that, that's.
I know, it just, everyone knows, we're not talking like Worcester City Council here, this is turned into a full-time job or even, or, you know, stipend for anybody, this is a, we all realize that we're, there were volunteers.
Just a quick question, the, is it inclusive of the, the school district?
So, again, short answer to that, my understanding is that that's a difficulty because of the regional district and whether or not school committees, what type of reward that they can get, so we're getting that a little bit, my understanding is it's not, but I think that's something that we need to look at. We're also looking at volunteer boards for discussion as well, or I shouldn't say, well, appointed boards, you know, is there a way to, you know, in a sense, give somebody enough so that they, that, that they can go buy pizza once in a while, you know, after a late meeting, you know, type of thing. And that's something that we're looking at, remember Dick Vaughn? The school committee would be out of scope and honestly, I didn't know that, so that was a surprise to me, so, you know, that is one of the things we'll look at more, but according to Dick, that, you know, and Andrew, I deferred you as well, don't think that we touch that one.
Yeah, to the chair, I, I would expect, David, I mean, Bill, I, I would expect the, the school committee probably is out, out of that, I mean, if you're having, if, if Dudley's at a different rate than Charlton is, that's.
Yeah, it turns into a thing.
That's right, yeah, yeah, that's. I would expect.
Andrew, what did you want to say?
No, I was, I was just going to occur with that, generally, the, the school committee falls under the, you know, the district structure of, of the school versus the town, so it would be at, at the school district's prerogative if it was to compensate at school committee members.
And I, I, as a former school committee member, I kind of knew a lot of, I was just kind of drawing it out, they don't make anything. I just, again, it's, it is what it is, but I'm just saying, at least Dudley, Dudley, you know, Dudley Charlton, so. But I think it's good for folks to know when they see the picture, to see the big picture, that, because people just don't know and most people wouldn't even think to ask, quite honestly, so, but, but thank you for that, everyone, I appreciate it. And that concludes the committee reports, unless I've missed anything. Next would be, because we already did the policy review, we're moving on down to Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. Andrew, did you want to add anything? I know you had something in our packet.
Um, let's see, I'm just looking for any changes from the last meeting, the only thing, I guess, was the, it's in my town administrative support too, but the update on Exxon Mobil's public hearings for Golden Cemetery Roads regarding the water process. We did meet with ExxonMobil D E P and the Board of Health with Water Sewer to update the progress regarding the content, the contamination issues over at Golden Cemetery Roads. Currently Exxon and D E P are developing a public communication strategy while they're awaiting the results of the contamin, contamination source investigation. Right now, there is a remote meeting scheduled for March fifteenth at six thirty, there will be public, will be invited to that meeting, that one is basically just going to be a meeting to discuss the process by which they're going to do some of the public reports, they're not anticipating having any sort of conclusive reporting as to the source of the contamination until about, until approximately June, and it'll probably be about three separate meetings, including this one, two, or public meetings that will be getting public input on the process throughout the way. If the board would like, I could invite the Board of Health to the next meeting to further discuss the process.
I would like, I'd like that, everyone good with that?
I would too.
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, thank you for the update, anything else with the policies, Andrew? I'm sorry, goals?
No, I think that was the only one that really had an update from the last meeting.
Excellent, all right, moving to the student select person report, Henry.
Thank you, just going to share that screen. All right. All right, so not a ton has happened since the last meeting, there's only one school committee meeting, so on a Monday, January twenty-fifth, which was two weeks ago, we, we shifted to the new learning model that I touched upon before. So all students were in afternoon classes for both cohort A and B and half the student body was in school Monday, Tuesday, the other half on Thursday and Friday, and Wednesdays are now a remote half day. And so feedbacks to the new policy adjustment is mostly positive, obviously, more work involved with more class time, so there's a little less free time from the lots of asynchronous learning time before and you, students are getting more rigor as they should. But I think two weeks ago, there was the first events of COVID transmission at Charlton Elementary School. So the school had to shift to complete virtual learning for three days, but they returned normal right after. And another kind of positive from the whole adjustment to this virtual learning is that with snow days now, the district now has the option to shift just classes like virtually and just say, don't come into school, so on the, actually today, they had a virtual day, so no one went into school. But sometimes like if the storm is bad enough and people start losing power, they'll just cancel classes, get the traditional snow day, as was the case on February second. So with extracurriculars, winter sports have started, but it's only basketball, but that's still positive, the teams are playing and they have their competitions live streamed, so that's good. And the fall two season is starting very soon on February twenty-second. And so that's kind of all the sports that did not occur in the fall that weren't deemed safe by the MIAA or winter sports that were kind of put on the back burner. So football, winter track, fall cheerleading and volleyball, and they still don't know exactly how competitions are going to look like with all the guidelines, but they are optimistic that something will happen and. And the music and band continues to practice, but again, they don't really know when they're going to compete. Uh, National Honor Society is planning a sock drive for the month of February, so bring in your new socks, please don't bring in your old socks. The Student Council is also hosting a drive-in theater at Shepherd Hill at five thirty, uh, this Friday, two movies will play and concessions will be sold. And it's kind of looking to the end of the year, so. Last year, obviously, a lot of the events like prom and graduation, the senior banquet were canceled with a lot of uncertainty. But this year, the district is trying to do a little bit more to accommodate those events. So the D C U Center, right now, it's a field hospital, so it's very unlikely that prom or graduation would happen there. So they're looking to do prom outside, uh, on Carmegani Field, and they would. You know, obviously, depending on the guidelines would dictate the event, but they're optimistic with it being outside, that it's a little bit more likely to happen. And same thing with, uh, graduation, uh, they would obviously socially distance the chairs. And senior banquet, uh, that usually happens at Holy Cross, uh, the senior class is looking to hold at Wachusett Mountain instead, which is a bigger venue, so. Just some things to keep in mind, a lot of uncertainty going forward, but they're optimistic that something will be a resemblance of normal.
Normal, sounds good, normal sounds are real good.
Yeah, it does.
All right, thank you, Henry, any questions for Henry?
Excellent.
Yeah, okay. All right, so next we have the Town Administrator Report, Andrew, you're up again?
All right, so I can already cover the, uh, first item on my, the other, the one I had was, uh, an update on, on COVID nineteen. So since the stand-up of the Harrington Vaccination Site in Southbridge, the Board of Health. Has helped facilitate the vaccination of over two hundred Charlton residents that are eligible for vaccination and are prepared to coordinate the appointments for over. Twelve hundred more individuals who have signed up through our online portal. Additionally, the Council on Aging has assisted scheduling vaccinations for another a hundred and ten residents that are over the age of seventy-five. The Southbridge Vaccination Site is a regional collaborative effort between the towns within the Harrington Catchment Area. The success of the Southbridge Regional Effort was noted in Congressman Neal's, uh, comments yesterday regarding statewide vaccination efforts as, uh, really a kind of a model in the state. Um, I want to thank the Board of Health and the Council on Aging for really leading the charge on the vaccination efforts and contributing to the success of the site. And then just from an operational perspective, uh, our current plan of action is to return town hall out, return to open town hall hours once the town of Charlton. Is no longer classified as a high-risk community for two consecutive weeks, but no sooner than March first, and then this falls in line with what the library's plans are as well, so that's what our game plan is moving forward.
Great, and I too want to echo the thanks that you just mentioned, especially, I know there's a lot of people, um, volunteering to help with the vaccination and make things go smoothly, and. Um, they're spending a lot of hours doing that for the community, so on behalf of the board, thank you, we really, really appreciate your efforts, so. Any other comments or questions? All right. Andrew, thank you, anything else to add, Andrew, are you good?
Oh, that's it.
All right. Moving on down to other business at, um, unknown at time of posting. You don't have any? And our next meeting announcement will be. For our next regular Board of Selectmen meeting will be February twenty-third, uh, six thirty PM, and of course, via Zoom, and maybe we can change that up, Andrew, huh, in March, maybe?
Fingers crossed, fingers crossed.
We can actually.
I gotta clear it with the boss.
Together, socially distanced, of course.
Sometime hopefully soon.
All righty, so, uh, we do have an executive session tonight?
Sure, I make a motion to go into executive session, to MGL, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One, A Number Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation, L N G. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, the chair so declares, and to reconvene to open session for any other business, if needed, and to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, and, uh, again, before we just take the vote, I want to thank everyone who took the time to join us tonight, and having said that, Steve?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Henry, I almost called for you to vote. Bill?
Hi.
Patsy?
Hi.
All right, and the chair votes side, we are now into an executive session, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, Henry.